All right, move out of number eight. Discussing the vehicle for Economic Development Authority.
On your tablet you have listed five quotes that we received for a 2017 Ford Explorer that would be used for an EDA vehicle to replace the one that was totaled earlier this year. In our budget, we have fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty budgeted. That included ten thousand dollars. That was the difference between the payoff on the other Explorer as well as forty-five hundred and sixty dollars which was already in the budget to finish out lease payments for this coming, actually this fiscal year. So I just need to have, for you to have some discussion to see if you want to do the approval to purchase the 2017 Ford Explorer and to give me authorization to sign the loan documents if you choose to do so. The lowest bid was from Fairway Ford at twenty-seven thousand two eighty-two eighty-two.
I don't think we got a choice. All right, need two separate motions. Any discussion?
Are we, should we finance it?
Yeah, we will be financing it. We'll pay ten thousand dollars down and then finance the remainder.
Which the ten came out of the other. And for the people who are not aware of what's going on, there was a accident and we lost a vehicle in the accident. We got money back from the insurance and paid it off and have ten thousand left. And so we're going to apply that ten thousand that we got out of the wrecked vehicle to the new vehicle, but we didn't. The bottom line is, as Mr. Hood said, we do need a vehicle. EDA does, so. First motion would be to authorize...
Approval to purchase first.
The approval to purchase the vehicle. Mr. Hood makes a motion.
I'll say it. Go ahead.
Mr. Heron, is that right? Mr. Heron seconds. The approval to purchase a vehicle. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The separate motion would be to authorize signing of loan documents for the balance.
So moved.
Mr. Jeter makes a motion, does second.
I'll say it.
Mr. Compton seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. You all need to break. Do you want to move on? You good?
No.
All right. We have one other normal business item. We moved out of number nine. Financing on the build-out of the second floor of this building. Mr. Dingus, you going to take charge or...
Will.
You will?
Ms. Starnes.
Last week, John Kilgore and myself had a call with David Rose and we discussed financing options for the build-out. Our estimate was four hundred thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And Mr. Kilgore spoke to the engineer and his engineering fees were not included. Mr. Dingus thinks with the paperwork he has that they are included, so we're trying to get some clarification there. But that could add possibly another fifty thousand dollars to the amount that we were originally thinking, which would be five hundred thousand. And Mr. Rose felt like we should go with local financing because that amount was not large enough for regular bond financing. Their proposed cost for consulting and legal fees to help with the RFP and the financing process would be twenty thousand dollars. If we chose to use Virginia Community Capital, we would not have to pay the bond fee and they told Mr. Kilgore that they could finance five hundred thousand dollars with a five-year adjustable rate beginning at four percent and that would charge, or would change every five years. I emailed last Friday some possible payment scenarios. I don't know if you had a chance to look over those or not.
Yeah, I did.
So I just, I guess we need to have a discussion if we want to continue. There's no cost to do a public hearing or explore financing. If we wanted to do that at the August meeting, you know, we would have more details and maybe some concrete numbers at that time.
I think that's what I would rather do. I mean, I would say we need to do it, but I just would rather have a little more info because I'll look at the ten-year, the fifteen-year, the twenty-year. What I mean...
That's a huge difference in the interest would be paying.
That's where you really start looking at it, is where the interest.
It's the better deal. Would you want to do the twenty thousand dollars and let Mr. Rose help us so that, you know, all of our legal things and stuff is included?
I think that in the past, they've done a really thorough job helping us with that type of information like that, so I would feel comfortable with that.
Okay, I just didn't know how everyone would feel being twenty thousand more dollars.
Well, I know, but a lot of times he finds ways to save that much more in the long run.
And he said he would be prepared, you know, if we want to do a public hearing on August 2nd. Like I said, there'd be no cost, but we would know more about it.
I've actually saved a lot of money with some refinancing and some options I've found for him, so.
What did we put in budget fact? Was it thirty-three thousand?
Thirty-three thousand four oh eight.
Was that...
That was around four hundred and forty thousand financed for twenty years at four and a half percent because that was just a guess that I made.
So we still should be pretty close in budget protection?
Yeah, we had a year's worth in there. I mean, we're obviously, we'll have a year's worth of payments, so as far as budget-wise, we should be good this year with what we have in there. That shouldn't be a problem. But we still need to iron out whether the fifty thousand's included or not.
Well, maybe you can know that next month.
I think Mr. Dingus called Carl this morning.
I called this morning. I'm waiting for a call back.
So we're working on that.
And the interest rate has been creeping up, so, you know, it's kind of roll the dice. You can do five years and then refinance that total amount and go back through this same process or go with Davenport at that time or do this. The option with BCC is quicker and the other one takes longer, but Davenport has been very supportive and done a good job for us in the past, so it's just whichever one you want.
How much are you going to get the percentage for, for the whole term now?
Four percent. That was through Virginia Community Capital. I don't have a rate yet through using Davenport.
That's four percent for the whole?
For five years.
For five years.
Yeah.
But you don't have one for the whole?
Uh-uh. And he did not for us that other day.
No, he can't do that. He can only do five years of that amount.
And one of the things that he mentioned too is where the building is collateral on the BRA, that they may want to hold part of our general fund where that part could be spent to cover the loan.
Yeah, Virginia Community Capital is just taking the moral obligation. They're not taking a leaning on anything, just boding moral obligation with the portion of budget.
Can you just go with them or do you have to go out to bid?
They are set up as a community development financing institute, so I think we'd have to look into that. I think it'd be true like a college, but, you know, as we go with them in public, we could do, but we'd have to check, make sure.
I think we just need more information before we do anything. Do we need to add a motion? About the twenty thousand, do we need to add a motion to spend the twenty thousand to come back?
Do you want to go with Davenport?
I don't think we need to do that yet.
That's just always figured in the budget.
Yeah, it would be included, but it would just, I had one report where it was already expensed.
You can decide that, like, to do what they can do in August, they wouldn't charge.
All right, Ms. Hood. Ms. Hood's suggestion is we hear from them in August, gain all the information we can.
So do we want to have a public hearing in August or we just want more information in August?
I would think we just want more information or actually talk with them more advertising from public hearings if we get into the next, the next month. Yeah, I mean, we might miss out on a quarter percent or something, but I think we'll be okay.
Is any timeline when you have to start this, get the change order in?
Yes, we're looking at, uh, two months time limit right now.
You mean the time left by now?
No.
Two more months.
Two more months.
We have to know something. We have to do something.
Does the change work on the last year?
By the end of August or when is that two months? When is that?
End of August.
So they need to decide something in August, one way or the other.
One way or the other, then we have to have a public hearing.
At our next meeting. Well, I think, I think we can have it digested all as a meeting, but...
The only thing we really don't know is the A and E fees. Are they included or are they not included? I mean, we know, we've got a concrete estimate for four thirty-eight eight seventy-seven. We're just, nothing in the air is the A and E fees included. Carl says no, that the twenty-five thousand you had already approved to be paid to get things moving on this project. Mr. Dingus, Mr. Dingus feels like that was part of the A and E fees.
So would that, would Davenport be going out to bid in July to get estimates or get proposals back on the financing?
Is that what you thought? Because he said we'd have to have a public hearing to finance.
To whatever they find out. Can they do that in the morning?
The way he talked, he could.
They could get it from banks, yes. And get your financing rate whatever it be.
And they would include BCC in that if that's...
We can ask them to do that. They probably can tell that's an option.
All right, so we'll need a motion to advertise.
Will you be approving Davenport taking control of it? I mean, who, I don't know about the public hearing. It's just part of what they'd be doing.
But he said if there was something done at the meeting formally that they could have everything ready for a public hearing in August 2nd.
Will you be approving that, go forward with that, with Davenport taking the financing?
Today.
So I guess the main thing is, is that, is that what we want to do, go with Davenport or just both ways?
I'm comfortable with that if the board is.
Which with the board?
With using Davenport.
Okay. Are you guys good with that? Yeah. I say put in form of a motion, let's roll. I'll make a motion that with the build-out financing, that we will go with Davenport as options.
All right.
Do I need to put a number on that?
You authorize staff to move ahead with them.
Yes.
Authorize them to go out and seek financing.
Right.
All right, you have second.
I'll say it.
Mr. Jeter seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So we will see what they find in the next thirty days. All right.
Do we have to say anything about advertising that currently?
For the public hearing?
Yes.
I guess we need a motion to that.
What's the public hearing for?
To do the financing. Was my understanding.
I mean, the deadline is the last of August, something done and we'll have...
Okay, we do the motion and then if we find out that we don't have to do the public hearing, then we don't do it.
I will go.
If you put a public hearing in the paper, you have to have it.
Yeah, but we have, we've got a couple of weeks before we have to advertise. That's what I'm saying, before it's advertised.
We should know, I mean, even if we do our motion to do that, we should know relatively soon. Whether we need to advertise it or not. Okay. So you just need a motion to...
If needed.
If needed, all right. I'll make a motion if, if this is needed to authorize staff to advertise a public hearing regarding build-out finance.
All right. You have second.
I'll say it.
Mr. Compton seconds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Note on that too, David, is you don't pay for the research, but if you take the financing option that Davenport recommends, then that's when you activate that, to Davenport.
Okay.
All right. All right, we move to item ten appointments. Tina.
You have one appointment to make to the housing authority. It's an expired term and you did not receive any applications.
Still no applications for housing authority. All right.
It's been a while, hasn't it? We need to get somebody out there.
Let me talk to Joe Horton, see if he can...
All right, let's table that thirty days. We'll see if we can find somebody who's willing to serve. All right, move to the next one.
You have one appointment to make to the planning commission. Bobby Clark has been serving and he did not reapply. You have one application in your packet from Patrick Deskins.
All right, one application. Four-year term for planning commission, open the floor for nominations.
I'll nominate Patrick Deskins.
Mr. Jeter nominates Patrick Deskins.
I'll nominate Roger Wolf.
Mr. Compton nominates Roger Wolf. Other nominations? All right, hearing none, we're closed nominations. We begin with all those in favor of Mr. Deskins, please say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Mr. Wolf?
Aye.
All right. Mr. Deskins, who served on the planning commission. All right. Is that it? Three years? All right. Item eleven. Ms. K.
We all have our reports in here in fact, so I need to talk to you about this one.
All right. Thank you. Anything for her. All right, move to item twelve, county administrator items. Ms. Starnes.
You should each have a handout that shows the June 30th Treasurers Accountability Report. We ended with four million three hundred sixty-one thousand three hundred eighteen dollars and seventy-eight cents in the general fund. And the Treasurers Accountability Report at July 5th as of today, after July claims totals three million eight hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred five dollars and forty-seven cents. And as far as the claims over five thousand, advanced disposal for the month of May was thirty-four thousand nine sixty-four thirteen. That was for the tipping fees for May. Scott County Health Department, sixty-one thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty cents. That's their first quarter fiscal year eighteen payment. Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority, one hundred ninety-five thousand eight fifty-two eighteen. That's the July payment. They're allowing us to make the first quarter payment in monthly payments. Bay Corps is one hundred sixteen thousand six hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. That's for first quarter workers comp, line of duty insurance. And there were no early claims. Total July claims are four hundred ninety-six thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. And I have a full list of claims if anyone would like to review those.
All right. Any questions about the claims for this month?
That one ninety-five eight fifty-two, the regional jail, that's just for one month?
That's for the month of July only.
All right, need a motion to pay the claims.
So moved.
Mr. Heron makes a motion. Mr. Jeter seconds to pay the claims as described. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
As far as Ms. Alainius, there's a letter in your extra packet regarding a pump storage meeting that's going to be held July 13th at 6:00 PM in Russell County. It would be important if two of you could attend that meeting. If you've got any other questions, just let me know. And the second thing, this was mentioned earlier about parking at Devil's Bathtub. We have received a grant in conjunction with the city of Norton for parking and trails totaling one hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred fifty dollars to build a parking area in that Devil's Bathtub area. So those are things that's coming up.
Let me just, how does that work with Conjuring City of Norton?
It's a large grant and that's the portion of the grant that's for, specifically for the Devil's Bathtub area.
Okay.
It's part of the town.
It's funded by Appalachian Springs.
It's a three million dollar town.
Yeah, City of Norton is the fiscal agent for our forest. Right. So they're, they're handling this, the Devil's Bathtub.
Okay. So it would just be running it through them?
Right, they handle all of them.
I got you.
So is that parking going to be in, would it be in the national forest?
I think they're wanting to do the upper area, is that correct?
Parking, the parking, the parking area is on six nineteen, it goes up just a little bit, about maybe half a mile on six nineteen and so on, the left-hand side. They would recreate a new trail and go on down to the Devil's Bathtub. The, the plan is also to put toilet facilities in there. And, you know, my suggestion is that I would charge a parking fee. You know, national, national forest, you go to park and, well, it pays three dollars a park. I don't see anything wrong with recovering some funds from that.
The toilets are going to use it, something like, they've got white toilets, I mean...
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
Would it be something like they have on white toilets? The toilets?
Yes, yes. It's your, yeah, it's your, kind of your, what I call your sweet smelling...
That's what it is, sweet smelling.
Sweet terminology.
Sweet smelling, sweet smelling toilets that you go and it all does. But it, it won't be, it won't, it won't be, it won't be something that you can push down the mountain, is that the word?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. But I, from what I'm understanding, when we first started doing this, the NIPA study had already been done by the Forest Service down. I've heard that the NIPA study has not been done, so that puts this task further behind. So, I mean, we started on this, what, two, three years ago trying to get that parking lot in there. So the sooner we can do it, the better.
All right. There was some talk about Jefferson National Forest Loop going up through there by six nineteen going over into Norton. Any, any more talk about that or know anything more about it in there?
It's, we, that's another one of the Virginia State Loop roads that would be paid and what was the cost for that? It was like six hundred and forty thousand dollars for that. It was a tremendous amount of money to blacktop that road at six nineteen. Is what, that goes way back, maybe two years in my memory.
All right.
That's all I have.
Well, that's good news. We appreciate the folks over there working with us and that's good news that we have that much money coming in and maybe that will help in some of the congestion over there. All right, two forty-six. Quick break and then we'll have our reports, two fifty-five, please. All right, this time we'll call back to order. We move to item thirteen. First up is Pam Cox with tourism report.
Well, happy Fourth of July, day late to chairman and board of supervisors. Hope y'all had a great Fourth of July. I had a nice Fourth of July. Went to the Dunkin' Parade. It's always a nice thing to do. I'll go ahead and give my report. We, you all, you can't hear me? We are continuing with the venue meetings and the last one we had was in March when we met at Appalachian Mountain Caverns. And we're having a good turnout. The majority of the venues are turning out and they're all participating. We discuss whether or not to do a reprint of the brochures or to wait and do a new design. And then there was a thought that we would have the Gander Moon Interpretive Center, but that'll be a while before that's ready to go ahead and go in. So we will be doing an RFP to do a reprint on the brochures. And we'll probably do another five thousand, so we'll be doing that, seeing an RFP out later this month. And we did discuss doing a large fold-out map that will be easy for visitors to use and we'll also have coupons on the back to drive tourists and visitors to the particular locations that participate. Everybody will be, will be listed on there, so.
I'll go back for one.
Okay. We were talking about the High Knob Enhancement Corporation earlier. They did submit an RFP for master design. They got two proposals that came back and they were not what they were looking for, so they have, are resubmitting the RFP, but this is for a master plan, to do a master plan for the visitor center and the entire High Knob area. And that will include funding for the Devil's Park, Devil's Bathtub parking lot area. In the meantime, I would suggest if, you know, if it takes a couple of years still to get all of that taken care of and to get a parking area out there, I would suggest that if there is someone who is an entrepreneur, if they'd like to make a little bit of money in the summertime, to run a shuttle service. I don't think anyone would object to paying maybe three dollars to park their car and ride up and be dropped off at the Devil's Bathtub. And for some reason, the Devil's Bathtub has kind of fallen off of the radar there for a little while. And I'm not exactly sure what caused the resurgence. But I went ahead and left my cell phone number, so people could get in touch with me if they needed directions to the Devil's Bathtub during the Fourth of July weekend. My cell phone rang off the hook. And then even when I got back into the office, there were probably thirty-plus requests for more information on the Devil's Bathtub. So it's come back up. Someone has seen it on social media, on Facebook. So, you know, it's continuing to be a great destination for folks to go see and go visit. We sponsored, and I say we, Scott County Tourism, we sponsored Warriors of the Anatuqua Tribe at Natural Tunnel State Park. And they, this is also sponsored by the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association, Coal Ridge Foundation, and Apple Shop. And these warriors do a great program, and they were taking, they went into the schools and did a large performance for the schools and everything. And when I went to the Natural Tunnel show, I had never seen as many people in attendance at a show at Natural Tunnel than I had to see the Warriors of the Anatuqua. And if you go onto Scott County Tourism Facebook page, you can see some of the dances. I did some videotaping. So it was, it was, it was a great event.
Did you do any dancing?
They're going to bring it back again. Yeah, they asked me to, but I'm...
Were they to?
I was working. I was working.
For your job.
That's always my, that's always my excuse, I was working. I'm doing the filming, I was working.
Did you get a jumper out of that window?
Oh, no. Missing one. Rider Runner Magazine is coming into town in August, the tenth to thirteenth. And they're holding a convention in Kingsport. But what they are going to do, they are going to include the routes that we have selected for Scott County and parts of the heart of Appalachia to ride on the motorcycle routes. Two of the riders, two of the riders, quote writers, stayed at the Esteville Bed and Breakfast earlier in May, March, May. And they went ahead and did some riding on the roads. Esteville, they loved the area and thought it was great and beautiful. So they did some pre-rides. So during that time period of August tenth and thirteenth, we'll be working that show. If you want to come out to Medview and see us and participate in some of the motorcycle rides. We've talked, I've talked a lot about the dark sky designation. Well, apparently, there is a young Eagle Scout, and this story appeared in the Bristol-Herald Courier. I always get alerts, I get Google alerts for certain things. And this story showed up, and as you can see, they had put Bark Camp Lake in Wise County, but that's okay. We'll fix that later. So this young scout is working on getting the dark sky designation for Bark Camp Lake. And that is a huge, that's a huge thing. There's only a few of those in the country. Kirby, the Miller Yard area, I know someone had posted that there weren't signs to mark the distance and everything. We do have signs on, along the river. We're still having people getting in the river late at night. There is money available. I don't know why, but that parking area has not been fixed yet. There's still funds within the Kirby holding a pot to do the work there at Miller Yard. So we have to make sure that that's done. I guess you all know that Natural Tunnel has yurts now. I did a boost on, a Facebook boost, which means I spent twenty dollars to boost a post. And this one got, it had a reach of seventy thousand six hundred and two, it had four hundred and one shares. That's huge for Facebook. And then a hundred and one comments. And I will tell you that my husband and I stayed at the yurts this weekend at Natural Tunnel State Park for Fourth of July. They're primitive. You have to walk up the hill to go to the bathroom. And they're very, they're very, very nice. They're, sometimes, I don't know how to put this, sometimes I forget old until I experience something new. Like, like, you know, slipping, slipping in something like this. But the yurts were made by a company in Floyd, Virginia, and then all of the labor was done by the folks at Natural Tunnel State Park. So this is a real asset to them to have these. They were full. The park was full this weekend. In the first of May, we joined up with the Southwest Virginia Outdoor Riders Summit based out of Abington and joined a group called Roots Rated and hosted a rider in this area. I was a little bit concerned, he was an outdoor rider. And, you know, sometimes you feel like you don't have, you don't have the same, or you don't have something as good as like maybe say Abington or some of the other participants in this. But this young man was so impressed with the area. We took him, of course it rained first day, and we did the Scott Creek Passage. We did dinner that evening on the deck at Natural Tunnel State Park. Coal Ridge Foundation brought in Bob McConnell, who explained everything about the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Interpretive Center. And then the next morning, we met up with John's son, Kayden Kilgore, who is another young man with legs as long as Grandaddy Wong's legs here. And we, we had taught, he, the rider, did want to do Devil's Bathtub. But Megan, Craigery and I at Natural Tunnel State Park said, "Let's do something a little bit different. Let's show people that there's more to Scott County than just the Devil's Bathtub." So went to the Falls of Little Stoney. I had enough sense, thank goodness, to drag my husband along, because it didn't take me long to figure out that those two could outwalk me in no time. My husband and I got up to about the first one, and we told them to go on. But, you know, we moved him back down to the parking lot. Well, they caught us. They caught us on the way back. And I said, "How did you get back so quick?" And they said, "We ran." And I thought, "Oh, to be young again." But we should have these stories. I'm really surprised they don't have them already. And they'll go on their website, and there'll be national distribution. And I think he was very well pleased. And probably what the theme of our story will be is Scott County Unplugged. And, you know, maybe you think that's not a good thing, but it is a good thing. It's a great thing. Especially, you know, millennials, people with, you know, young kids. He said, "My kids will love coming here, my wife, my kids." I don't, Young and Associates, we did the branding with them. And this was paid for through a grant by the Tobacco Commission that was obtained by the Heart of Appalachia. We did a tour with Scott County, to as much of Scott County as we possibly could. We only had them for a day also. We met and talked with all of the stakeholders, and a report is expected back in the fall of the year. And I don't know if any of you all are familiar with the gentleman standing on the porch there at the old, the old Nicholsville Gauges Townhouse. But that, that's John Lee, and he has a vision similar to what we had talked about with the Daniel Boone Wilderness, Wilderness Road folks. So I'm going to try to meet back up with him within the next couple of weeks and talk about that. Photo contests, we're continuing to do that. In April, it was Sherri Hilton's and Mays. I mean, no one could be Rodney Addington's photo. I had a little, had a little blip, this last, this last one. I was in a hurry, and I didn't, you know, we were gone. And I had just a little bitty, teeny tiny bit of service, internet service, and I came in to do the winner because, you know, you want the winner to know. And I'd come back to check it, and I didn't look at, I didn't look at the numbers correctly. So I ended up having, we're going to have two winners this month. Both of them will receive a fifty-dollar gift card. One will be used, one will be the June photo, and then the other one will be the July photo. So I felt like that was the best thing to do to, you know, make up for my mistake, my big, huge error. And it took me a while to realize, even when I got back and had internet service, what I'd done. Mountain Music Homecoming, I don't know, can I?
Yeah, I can do it, Pam.
You can get it to play?
Should be able to.
This was a great show at Natural Tunnel State Park. And, you know, I think that Crooked Road, the expense and money, you know, a lot of money to do this. But they're, they're doing some good things with educating people about mountain music culture. And there weren't a lot of people there, but the people that were there, they were all out-of-town visitors from, I mean, Connecticut, Massachusetts, I think Nebraska, New Hampshire, places like that. So it was a great show. I enjoyed it, too. That's also on the Facebook page, if you want to check that out further. But the two young ladies that are clogging, that can really clog. You should watch the other one, my other video, I've been clogging. Oh, no, now we've lost me. You're getting, did you lose me totally? Okay. We helped Scott County Tourism, we worked with, we sponsored the Clinch Mountain Honey Hole, which was a big garage sale that the tourism group wanted us to put on, the tourism committee wanted us to put on as a cultural event during the Mountains of Music. This was down in the parking lot down here. We worked with Town and Gate City to get it put on. They did their Clinch Mountain Music Fest, and Carter Family Fold has kind of stepped away a little bit. But they did two shows that weekend, Trey Hensley and Bob Ickx and the Hog Hop String Band. And we have another new wedding venue. It's home place on the Holstein. And I'm sure some of you all may be familiar with this. This is Judge Kilgore's mother. It's Linda Burkett, and it's, you can't see, you can't see her house from the road. But once you get up there, it's absolutely beautiful. It's historical. I have a story that I'm getting ready to put on the website about her event place and the homes. The Papa Joe Smitty Mountain Music Festival will continue despite losing Papa Joe this past year. Will still, it will still run the weekend of Labor Day. This year, I've been trying to attend and go and take photos of all the local events that I can possibly get to. So I think it's important for me to show up and be there and, you know, to take photographs and put them on the Facebook page. I think people like seeing their photographs. They like seeing themselves. Run through pre-publicity, I'm at eighty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-four right this time this year. Facebook likes have grown considerably, six thousand four hundred and sixteen. And I think that is in large part to the, due to the photo contest. Because the way that this one is set up, the photos show up on the Facebook page, and people can see them and like them. And there's been some really phenomenal photographs submitted in there. Twitter, I have all kinds of Twitter followers. And see, they are able to see the same photographs that are showing up on the Scott County Tourism Facebook page. And, you know, they love this area, too. Instagram, I've got fourteen and forty-six followers on that. So I try to keep up and do the social media. I still do the events newsletter every week. I try to send it out on Monday so people will know what's going on. I also attach it to the Scott County Tourism Facebook page. And when I came in today, I've got like thirty new subscribers to that. So, I don't know. People are, I guess people are alerted about Scott County now. I don't know. Still continuing with regional partnerships. And the new project, probably what we will concentrate on is doing the brochure reprint, the roadmap with coupons and the twenty-eighteenth calendar. And the RFPs will go out by the end of the month, I hope. So if y'all have any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
Questions, comments? You've been a busy little bee.
I've been a busy little bee.
That's great.
Good. I like to be busy, yeah. Sometimes when you get, sometimes in the winter, there's a little bit of a lull, but, you know. Now, now I can catch up on my sleep any other time.
We appreciate your effort in getting out and promoting the county, and that's fantastic report.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate you all letting me have this job and getting out and promoting the area. I was a little bit frustrated this morning when I presented. Yeah, I was going to resign the first of September that. I got over it. I got over it. I've gotten just time to do my supposed thing. Thank you. I'm sorry, y'all. I gotta be somewhere at three-thirty.
It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We move on to Mr. Kilgore here today with the report from economic development.
I'll try not to be the death of a parrot here. Tried to just talk a little bit. First, I'm really fortunate to be here because of the accident. That's the closest I've ever come to not being here. And I've been hit hard, as David can attest to in football, and I've never been hit that hard. I didn't see it coming. I don't know what I would have done if I saw it coming, because there was no way out. I was between a guard rail and that vehicle. That's the only place I could go. So I'm just really fortunate to be here. Thank you all for the support earlier. And I'll get through the presentation here, and I'm thankful that I had no broken bones or anything. Thought I did to begin with, but I didn't. Just a lot of bruises and all that, all this was sore here from the seatbelt hitting me. Airbags deployed, all that came out. So thank you, and sorry I couldn't be at the last meeting. That was kind of, I was on my way to that, another meeting. But in May, when you all had your budget meeting here, I know Ross explained to you what was going on. I was on my way to that. Didn't expect that at all. Here's my report. And first, I want to give you an update. She talked about the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Interpretive Center, and construction is moving forward on that project. And I've got my thing here. It's underway with main grading, and then also the building pads, of course, been done in the site. You'll see that in a minute. And they're currently building walls, so what they'll do next is the heavy timbers will be, they're ordered, and they'll be there to connect the walls. But you can see that we've got some drone pictures, thanks to Lenoisco. They helped us out in Duffield by taking the drone pictures. But the building pad there, you'll see that's earlier. And this is a later version with the walls up, and you can see the parking area to your right. And then of course, a closer view of that. So it's moving right along as far as construction. Again, it's about, this is a four-point-seven million dollar project with exhibits and everything included in that. We've already met with the exhibit designer, which is Design Minds. And they're working on getting the final exhibit to VDOT to get that approved. Then they'll start constructing the... Then they'll start constructing the exhibits this fall as well. So we'll be ready to open, uh, first quarter of next year. There's some other, there's a, uh, another drone view. All these are drone pictures, which that's a cool thing to have that. Show you some more on Riverside in a minute. But they are working, uh, of course, Quinzenberry's down there every day to get those. Soon as the timbers are, are, are here, they get those constructed, then they'll get the roof on, then they'll start, uh, going to town on the inside. And they'll get the electrical and all the wiring. You'll see the walls on the inside, so they'll, they'll move pretty quick after that. There's part of the sidewalk going down, uh, back down toward the cul-de-sac right in front of the Crooked Road Technology Center. So the views up there are just awesome. As you, uh, you can see Cain Gap and then you'll see Powell Mountain and see the valley, the Duffield, see the industrial park. It's just beautiful up there. So here's some more pictures of the walls. So, and that's what it's supposed to look like at the end. So we'll have some, uh, have a good place for, uh, people to visit and to learn more about Daniel Boone and his journey through our county. And here's, uh, some Tate Center drone pictures as well that, uh, this will help us market that building. And, and, you know, really when you look like, it looks like this is Photoshop, but it's not. I mean, this is a real picture from, from a drone. And you can see that, uh, you get some really good shots. Another thing we've been working on for Duffield, of course, is the TVA Invest Prep Fund, the Invest Prep funding. New sign and beautification entrance at the, uh, Scott County Regional Business and Tate Park. Sign is in production. Snyder Signs is working on that. TVA is working with the sign company. They have a landscape architect and they're working with them on landscaping items. Total funding for this project's about three hundred thousand two ninety-three. Partnership between TVA, Pavon Electric Co-op and the Virginia Tobacco Commission. So here's what the sign will look like when it's finished. And with the landscaping, it'll look a lot better than the brick sign that's there located down on that corner. And this will be on the same corner the original sign is. It's there right now. We don't own the other corner. That's owned by Holston Medical Group. We just own this corner here. Riverside Development, uh, we've updated the website and with new, new drone pictures and also a new video. And, um, videos on the website. You can go to the website riversidedevelopment.com and see that. I won't show that today, but I will show you some of the pictures. And this is a picture of the site with the new road. You see the bank to the right and, uh, and Teletec at the back of the property. Of course, there's a picture of the parking lot of Teletec looking back toward Lockson Gap. And the views here are awesome as well. You know, you're talking about some awesome views in, uh, Scott County. It's, it's just remarkable. And that's what the people at Teletec say, you know, it's amazing. We're walking around the parking lot and see the views here. At one of the most beautiful sights that they have. You see that's looking back toward you and back toward Darrell's home there. Well, yeah, I guess maybe that way. And there's the Holston River. You can see the, the part of that, uh, construction going on as well. That was the old construction road there, the, the dirt road going up when, when they were under construction. Whoops, sorry, too quick. And then there's another view with all the land there. We did a new brochure, the, uh, eight half by eleven size. And then did a postcard that we can mail out as well on the Riverside Development site. So we posted those on our website as well, so people can download those. And then there's just a picture of the website. If you want to get additional information or anybody wants additional information on the Riverside Development, we can, uh, uh, tell them to go to that website. We've also, uh, small business loans and, uh, uh, there's another program through, uh, Virginia Coffee and Development Authority. And she mentioned one of those was a waiting facility that, uh, they're going to go through to VCD, I think, at the next meeting and, uh, then ask for some funding from that. So that's, uh, another avenue that VCD is offering to small businesses. So they can also go through this program or RBA or Rural Business Enterprise Grant Program. It's a grant to us. We're required to loan that money out. So we have twenty loans that have been approved to date, four hundred and eleven thousand dollars and, uh, almost four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Sixty-two employees, three tourism related, eleven retail, and then six support businesses. So it's all, always good to have a part of the package, small business as well as larger business that, uh, you can help support. Whoops. Ah, too quick on the trailer. Uh, on the Scott, we also, uh, the board voted, the EDA board, to do a hotel study. And, uh, of course, we did one a few years back, but that's what you need if you're going to try to attract hotels and study first. So the first phase of that study has been completed. And, uh, based on what they've determined is the occupancy, based on assumptions that the, uh, hotel study group has come up with, it will be about fifty-five to sixty percent occupancy rating. Now, Phase Two is in progress and, uh, the Phase Two will work more and tell us what the numbers are and what they'll look like, what a pro forma will look like for one of those, which we can hopefully help, uh, developer and sell the developer to locate somewhere in the county and, and do a hotel. Virginia Community Council has partnered with us on this project. They actually provided us two thousand dollars for the study. And, uh, we can, we put that toward the study, which is eighty-eight hundred dollars for that, for both phases. And, uh, that helped us in coordinating with Virginia Community Council. Bush Bill, uh, TNL has submitted permit application to lower Corps of Engineers and we're waiting on reply. That's a thirty percent review. They've got a thirty and a sixty and a ninety, and then a hundred percent. Then it's approved for, to construct that. It's a long process to work with VDOT on investment projects. Just got to wait, as you well know, with the Daniel Boone Project. It just, you gotta go through their process. Same way with the trail. The environmental documentation has been completed and submitted to VDOT. This is to, to extend the trail from where the Crooked Road Pick Center is down to behind Holston Medical Group. The Phase One B is under, under review by VDOT. And once they get that, then we'll be ready to work with the engineer, get the final plans approved and then get that under construction. I was hoping all that would come into play when we get the sign done, but it looks like the sign will be done first, the lights, and then the trail. Probably will follow that. She mentioned Mountains of Music Homecoming, which is a great success story. With, uh, being on the Crooked Road Board, there was, uh, about twenty-three hundred tickets were sold before the concert started this year, which is more than we ever had. And it was, of course, a nine-day festival from June ninth to the seventeenth. Included Scott County, but included the region. And, uh, one thing that, uh, Crooked Road has put into place is one of those is a tribute show to Ralph Stanley. And, uh, I attended that, represented Crooked Road, uh, and it was in Norton. Ricky Skaggs was there and, uh, actually, uh, talked about Ralph Stanley and it was just a great concert. Ralph's, actually Ricky Skaggs and Larry Sparks who used to play with Ralph Stanley. Just a great, uh, uh, group that they put together. Last year they did the same thing. They did an all-star bluegrass group. They had one of our citizens, uh, Sean Lane was in that group, who, who plays with Blue Highway. He don't live in Scott County now, but he is from here. Lives in Greenville now. But it's just, uh, they put a great group together last year of, of, uh, the people here from Southwest Virginia. So the same thing they did this year is a tribute to Ralph Stanley. And, uh, another thing that we're, we're working on is we do concert recordings. So we asked for permission to record one of the songs of the concerts. And you, you won't find this on any CD anywhere. So that, uh, we'll have a song from where, uh, they did the Ralph Stanley Tribute at one of those shows. It'll be on that CD. Like last year we did the All-Star Bluegrass Band. You won't find that on another recording. And then this recording is we're doing a, a century of heritage guitar music. So we're celebrating the great guitar players. So on this guitar sampler CD, we'll have an opening song of Maybelle Carter and an ending song of Maybelle Carter. One of the ones that, a Wildwood player recording that you probably won't hear in other places. It's a rare recording. And then also on this that you're not aware of, and I don't know if he's aware of it or not. He's not in here. It's Matt Bright is an awesome guitar player. He will be featured on this guitar sampler CD. And, uh, the great thing about that is if you don't know, if you ever seen the tourism brochure with the guy on the guitar on his back, that was Matt Bright. That they were, they did a picture of him and he was on the official Tourism Guide. And he's also on the Crooked Road Guide back probably five years ago. So he's also, he'll be featured on this CD. That'll be great. And we'll be selling those. So buy one, listen to Matt Bright. I know David likes music, so you'll have to buy that CD. And you may have to get up with Matt and play some bass, right? Roll the old bass in, dust it off a little bit. Prospect activity, we've had nine new prospects and one site visit. We've also, uh, replied to four requests for information. And a lot of times those come through either regional partners, like they could come through TVA or VCD. Then they'll ask for additional information and then we'll send additional information about a sign or a building. And, uh, then they'll make a determination whether they want to do a site visit or not. So, uh, that's kind of the first step in the prop, in the process. We'll continue to work with existing businesses and prospects, uh, as they come to us. And what we do, what we plan to do this year is, uh, we, uh, board presently that we're working on the fine tuning our strategic plan. And, uh, we're, we've asked for input from all board members. And, uh, we'll ask for board input from, uh, you know, Freedom Bill too, as well as we're going through this process. And, and you all as well, talking about our strengths, weaknesses, what we need to improve. We did, we also got a new program through TVA and that's the Certified Rural Economic Development Organization and we plan to apply for that in August. And I think that'll be, give us a feather in our cap. I'm always looking at ways to improve economic development for the county, but it also improves economic development for the region. And, uh, this is one way we can do it. They'll give us feedback on our positives and how we can improve. And, uh, then we'll take that and implement some of the things that we need to. We want to also complete construction on the Daniel Boone Interpretive Center. We want to initiate new grant projects, new potential new programs. There's a lot of new programs that are coming out. Want to make sure that, uh, we're on the forefront of those, working with Lenoysco to see, you know, how we can benefit from those programs. And a lot of those are affecting coal, uh, related communities, but we are on the, you know, the verge. We're right on the edge of the coal-related communities. And we have a lot of coal support jobs, you know? If you recall Duffield with Kamatsu, uh, of course, they're directly coal-related. We also want to continue to work on regional economic development projects. Some of those regional initiatives are, uh, RIFA, a Regional Industrial Facilities Authority, that's working with, uh, Scott, Lee, Wise, City of Norton and, uh, the county of Dixon County and setting up a RIFA. And we have that, uh, group that has met a few times. And, uh, the attorneys are working through that and, and looking at the language on that RIFA. And hopefully we'll come back, maybe the next, it might be the next meeting, but it might be the September meeting with some type of resolution or asking you to support some type of resolution. The other one that we've been working on is the Go Virginia Initiative. That includes, uh, planning districts one, two, and three. And our representatives for the, uh, the Lenoysco region is, uh, Dwayne and, uh, UVA Wise President Donna and George Krillen from Lee County. And, uh, if you have questions, you know, or any concerns on Go Virginia, you can definitely take over any of those and talk to them. But we also have, under Go Virginia Initiative, there's, they've set up an economic development group. And I'm serving on that. They're also a chamber group. And, uh, our chamber is involved in that. So hopefully we'll get additional funding, but right now that is in the planning process. So they're not really looking at accepting funding applications or, or grant applications for that. So we'll continue to watch that. And, uh, the regional marketing initiative, uh, the Virginia Tobacco Commission did approve four hundred thousand for the regional marketing initiative. And, uh, we, just, this morning we met with TVA and to discuss if, how they could be a partner of that. And they're looking for additional money to match that Tobacco Commission. And, uh, it looks like that'll move forward as well. And that'll be to market the, uh, seven coal field counties and the City of Norton. So additional marketing that we can, uh, support. And hopefully that'll help us and get our, get the word out to, to more people and to get us more leads. That's what it's all about. More leads in the funnel so we can get that one that'll locate here. And she mentioned the Friends of Southwest Virginia funding. That's a three point three million dollar grant through ARC, but that's for the whole Southwest Virginia and for High and Auburn area, that's one point one million. So I have been helping with the Maestro Plan, uh, interviews and, and helping with the RFP. And so, uh, that's some regional projects we've been working on.
Questions, comments?
They had a, Dave Pires up there, um, Sankey up there was telling me something about a railroad, the parking lot yard. Have you heard anything, said anything about it?
Yeah, actually Tim and I, Tim Blake Baker, Small Business Development Center, we, we wouldn't have been met with him. And, uh, as far as I know, he's still working with Tim on the business plan. And then once that gets finished, then we talked about, had a partnership with Wise County because it's really close to Wise County line. And, uh, so Tim continues to work with him on that.
You've got a lot of good prospects for Riverside?
We've had, uh, some prospects for Riverside and, uh, hopefully some will locate soon, we hope. But we've had a lot for Duffield too. Came, gave him good stuff.
Have you heard any, is Duff, uh, is Kamatsu going to make a, 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 an announcement? Like, my son was telling me something about a flag raising.
They are doing a flag ceremony and I think that, uh, they send it out to, they didn't want a whole lot of people there, but they wanted us to invite certain people. So you, some of you may be getting invitation, might go to the chairman, vice chairman, I think. So they would kind of want to limit the number of people that were there. So if you can make that, it's the fourteenth, I believe that's right, on a Friday. It's close to Flag. It is Flag Day, I guess.
I don't know.
Flag Day's June fourteenth.
Oh, June fourteenth. That's on the wrong, the wrong month. July fourteenth, so it's not Flag Day. So those that can, please try to attend that. Uh, they are doing a flag ceremony. Raising the Kamatsu flag down there. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. We appreciate it all. And that brings us up to date. A lot of things going on and we hope you have good news in the future. Continue.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that concludes our reports. Do you have anything for close session? Just not working out. All right. We will move to, uh, final comments, requests from board and staff. If you have anything. And then we'll wrap it up with anything anyone else needs to add that has not been mentioned. Mr. Jeter?
Uh, I've got nothing.
All right, sir. Mr. Compton?
I've got nothing.
Mr. Harris?
Okay.
You're good. Mr. Hood?
Good.
All right. The only thing I have is, uh, I want to remind, uh, Freedom and Sally and Bill, whoever else is involved, that this program we've got funded from Marcus. Now, the rent is July. We need to, uh, I guess, make sure he's aware that the funding is in place and let them know they need to get started and...
I actually emailed him this morning to try to get something said and, for further discussions. He knows it's in the budget.
All right. That's good. And I will tell you this, I don't know if I'm, I think I mentioned it before, but in, in my discussions with him during the negotiations, they wanted that program to at least have a two-year minimum. And the reason is they can't attract good, um, candidates. If they just offer them a year, they think that thing might be cut out. So as far as funding through the budget, I kind of gave them my word that we would give them a two-year minimum. So we can plan on that in the budget and we'll see how it goes. So, we plan on that in the budget and we'll see how it goes. And hopefully that will continue to relieve our expenses down at the regional jail when it gets in place. But I just want to mention so that we do get something started this month and he can be moving ahead.
I do have one thing.
Yes, sir.
I've never received any information back from Mr. Melton VDOT of the Spears Ferry and Andrew Way signs. He kind of, we went back and forth on some emails and I'm already, probably...
Haven't heard anything.
It's been a month, hasn't it? Or right at it.
I don't know what that sign means.
Well, anyway, I'm, Mr. Pearson has called me and he said that he was going to try to revisit that. I know that's fine. So, they expect that he may come back in there a month or two. Mr. Pearson's down on Andrew Way.
All right. Good. Thank you. Anything else? Anything we have not discussed or that anybody has, that they need to bring forward? All right, what's our date for August?
August second.
Second. All right. Eight thirty a.m. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn till August second, eight thirty a.m. Thank you.